Good evening. I'd like to call the January 4, 2022, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us. Happy New Year. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. All right. I wanted to announce that if folks who are attending the meeting parked in the county's parking facility or use public transit to attend the meeting, you can get validation for your parking or transit passes by seeing one of the officers who's here with us this evening to get validation for those. I'd like to read the ethics reminder for the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at the commission meeting this evening. I'd like to make a note that County Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrarrah is going to be participating in the meeting this evening virtually, and so we'll need to do a roll call vote on any matters that we vote on this evening. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda from any commissioners? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published? All in favor, I'm going to start with Commissioner Edwards first, and we'll go across the dais.
Aye.
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 Commissioner Beach Farrarrah?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We now come to public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with our county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment period. This is the chance for the public to speak to the board. And we have one person who has signed up. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. It's Sherry. Sherry's the first name? Yes. Please come on up, Sherry. You can come to the podium over here. And you'll get an orange light when you've got about 30 seconds left, and then when the red light illuminates, your time's up. Thanks.
Am I allowed to pull this down when I speak, or no?
When you're at the podium, that's okay. And we'll just put it back on when you depart the podium.
So I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Okay. Okay. So I don't really have any prepared comments today. I know that you're going to be addressing the mask issue. And back in August, when you decided to extend the state of emergency, or renew it, rather, I testified along with several of my colleagues who are doctors, nurses, there were mental health professionals here, very respectable members of the community. And it didn't matter what science we presented, it didn't matter what we had to say, our comments were ignored, and I feel like we were treated incredibly disrespectfully, and you talked down to us almost like we were prison inmates. And what I want to say is I'm not going to present any more science to you or statistics. What I am going to say is by extending the state of emergency, you are, one, abusing your powers, in my opinion, and, two, you're inciting mass fear. I live in a beautiful community. My neighbors will no longer come in my home. They're afraid. People are afraid. My own parents have not seen my children in almost two years. They got together for Christmas, they sat outside in 30-degree weather, six feet apart. My parents were masked. They have not hugged their own grandchildren in two years. They might die never hugging their own grandchildren. So I'm asking you, when you are thinking about the safety of Buncombe County, to think about the health of all of your residents, about the total, complete health, and know that people are suffering. They've got mental health issues, they've got addiction issues, and they're also afraid. And by perpetuating the state of emergency and making everybody wear masks, which, it's just, they're not effective. Like, the vaccines are not working, the masking is not working. What you are doing is you are perpetuating a state of fear and creating divisiveness in the community. If you want people to get healthy, ask them to take care of theirselves with measures that go beyond masking and go beyond getting vaccinated. And let's return Buncombe back to a place that's friendly and where people embrace other people. But I've had it, and it's very disappointing. And if you're not here to represent your constituents, I don't know who you're here to represent, but we're going to vote you out of office. That's all I have to say. We're tired of this. So, thank you.
Members of the public who wish to speak during the public comment period? All right. Okay, we come next to good news, and Jennifer Barnett is going to give us a presentation about the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, chairmen and commissioners. So each year, following the conclusion of the budget adoption, the budget team works to prepare the annual budget document for publication, and in accordance with Government Finance Officers Association Best Practice Criteria, budget staff submit the final document to GFOA within 90 days of budget adoption, where it is reviewed by association members for adherence to best practice guidelines. We're provided with notations around exceptional work and feedback for improvement. The Government Finance Officers Association notified us, December, I think, 20th, that Buncombe County, North Carolina, has received GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for fiscal year 22 budget for a 26th consecutive year. I'd like to take a moment to express my gratitude and appreciation to the budget team for their dedication to the work they do every day, as well as their commitment to excellence in delivering one of the most important documents in government. John Hudson is here in present with us today on behalf of the budget team. Other members who are not able to be here and are contributors to the document include Sam Riddle, Rusty Mao, and Heather Holsey. I'd like to share a review or comment. Buncombe County has produced a very comprehensive budget document that certainly provides accountability to its citizens. In particular, there is a great emphasis on all aspects of strategic planning, goal-setting, and related topics. Such time, effort, and work in these areas provides a very sound and solid foundation and direction clarity upon which to place the county's budgets. So in that, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share some of the good news around the budget team. Thank you.
Great news, and great, great job. All right, the next item on our agenda is recognition of Buncombe County's 230th anniversary. And there's a proclamation that I'm going to turn it over to County Manager Avril Pender to get us started.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you mentioned, this is our 230th anniversary, and we have some slides of Buncombe County past and present that I'll have Max to click through real quick. So just looking at the historical perspective of Buncombe County. And as we go into this 230th year, staff would plan when the weather gets better. Staff would plan a day of impact where our staff can volunteer in our community and show what Buncombe County is about and what our staff can do. Some more to come on that later as we go through. But if you look at the slide deck, you will see what Buncombe County downtown Asheville looked like back in 1890, and now, present day. You start to go through and see where we have come from for our 230th year. Relax. Remember the anchor? I'm looking at a picture of our downtown. The courthouse is the only thing that still looks the same, isn't it? Baton Avenue? So as you mentioned, there's a proclamation that Commissioner Wells will read.
Well, first, thanks for putting those photos together. That was fun to look at that. "County of Buncombe Proclamation: Buncombe County 230th Anniversary. Whereas the County of Buncombe was established in 1792 and will celebrate its 230th anniversary in January of 2022, and whereas, according to oral tradition, Samuel Davidson was the first white person to permanently live in what is now Buncombe County when he built a homestead on Bee Tree Creek in 1781. And whereas, the area currently known as Buncombe County, North Carolina, rests on land that was first inhabited by the Cherokee, who flourished here for thousands of years, as well as the Catawba people. And whereas, a small group of wealthy landowners formed Buncombe County's first local government in 1792. And whereas, the county was named to honor Colonel Edward Buncombe, a Caribbean-born plantation owner and Revolutionary War veteran. And whereas, at the time of its creation, the jurisdiction of Buncombe County encompassed most of the western part of the state and was so large that it was often called the State of Buncombe. And whereas, the county seat, originally called Morristown, was renamed Asheville in 1793 to honor Governor Samuel Ash. And whereas, Buncombe County became a popular destination in the 19th century for merchants from the Appalachian foothills, as well as leisure travelers from the Lower South, seeking refuge from mosquito-borne diseases and intense summer heat. And whereas, today, more than 10 million people make their way to Buncombe County each year, and whereas, at least 21 working family farms have been in business for more than 100 years. And whereas, Buncombe County is now home to more than 263,000 residents in Asheville, Biltmore Forest, Black Mountain, Montry, Weaverville, Woodfin, and the unincorporated areas of the county. And whereas, Buncombe County is a caring community in harmony with its environment, where residents succeed, thrive, and realize their potential. And whereas, Buncombe County strives to promote a healthy, safe, well-educated, and thriving community with a sustainable quality of life and provide effective and efficient government our residents can trust. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this fourth day of January 2022, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the momentous occasion of Buncombe County's 230th anniversary and extend to the county its employees, residents, and visitors best wishes for the county's continued success in all future endeavors. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners."
Thank you, Commissioner Wells, for reading that. And thank you to the staff for helping to craft that. And the pictures were really cool. So thanks for taking time to recognize this occasion and reflect on our history. All right. We do not have any public hearings. There any other items under the county manager's report? Ms. Pender?
I'll report.
All right. No old business. So we have several items under new business. The first item on our agenda is discussion and consideration of an item related to county commissioner districts and governance structure, and specifically consideration of entering into an engagement letter with Pointer Spruill, which is a law firm that has some expertise regarding issues around county governmental structures in North Carolina and associated legal issues. So the question before the board tonight is whether or not to retain their counsel to provide legal guidance to Buncombe County commissioners on issues related to these matters. Just a little bit of background on this item. Buncombe County is the only county of the 100 counties in North Carolina where the structure and the districts of the county commission itself are directly tied to the electoral districts created by the North Carolina General Assembly for the North Carolina State House members. About a decade ago, a local bill was passed that basically stated that the county commission districts would be the same as the Buncombe County State House districts. Eventually, those districts were declared to be unconstitutional by the courts in North Carolina due to extreme gerrymandering, and the courts required different maps to be developed. Since we have just gone through the 2020 census, the North Carolina General Assembly is going through another statewide redistricting process. And so the county commission's districts are, again, tied up into the redistricting process that goes through the state general assembly. And there's another round of litigation challenging the constitutionality of the new districts. So there's a couple of different matters here, but one of the issues is if the newly drawn maps by the general assembly are also determined to be unconstitutional as the previously drawn maps from the general assembly were determined to be unconstitutional, we want to make sure, the legal case that's going on around this is mostly being sort of fought out between different sides who have perspectives on the general assembly. But we want to make sure that the courts are aware that Buncombe County's county government is actually tied up into that same case, because we are the one county in the state that has uniquely had our system for governance in elected districts linked to what the general assembly maps are. So Pointer and Spruill can file a brief with the courts to basically notify them that our county sort of has an interest in the outcome of that, and particularly if the courts find that the general assembly maps are unconstitutional, that they're aware that those same unconstitutional maps are in effect as it relates to Buncombe County Commission. So we want the courts to be aware that we're potentially affected by this in a way that no other county governments in the state are. Separately from that, there are protocols under North Carolina general statutes that allow counties to go through different processes to think about the kind of governance structure they may want to use for the future. Pointer Spruill could also provide guidance to the commission about different options that could be potentially available to us, even consistent with the local bill that was passed 10 years ago. So those are some of the matters that this firm might be able to provide guidance on. We don't have to make any specific decisions about any of those potential governance structures in the future, but the question is rather to retain outside counsel that can help provide some guidance to us around issues related to those matters. So are there any questions from any commissioners about the engagement letters? Or is there, we would need a motion to approve entering into, there's two separate engagement letters. One is related to Pointer Spruill notifying the courts through a briefing about how Buncombe County is sort of uniquely connected to the statewide redistricting process. And the other is their ability to provide more general counsel to the county around how state statutes work in terms of determining future governance structures that could be considered consistent with state policies.
I'll make a motion that we enter into an engagement letter with Pointer, or I guess two engagement letters with Pointer Spruill for both of those reasons stated.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Yes. How much are we looking at this is going to, how long will it be going on? And can we just set a budget of how much we're going to spend on this?
So my understanding is that on the issues around the statewide redistricting, that the sense is that, and I'm not an attorney, but just kind of trying to follow this, is that it's moving pretty fast. And ultimately, it is, I think folks have shared that it's most likely these issues will wind up in front of the state Supreme Court, probably in the very near future. If there's a brief filed notifying the courts about Buncombe County's connection to that, that it would be pretty short and simple. So I'm not anticipating that this is going to be a matter that is going to be like a very protracted or require an extensive amount of legal time. I don't know that we would be prepared to, or if anyone could estimate exactly what that might be, but it's not something that is expected to be a very long or protracted kind of legal endeavor. So I don't know if it's possible to set a budget at this time, but that's just sort of my general sense is that these will not be things that require, you know, 100 hours of legal time or something, anything like that.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that this is not drawn, and I know we've had some conversation about it, but how much we're going to be spending on this is my biggest concern.
I don't know, Michael, if there's any way to kind of just provide any sort of general estimates based on the scope of work that we've discussed, what this, you know, how many hours might be required to do the kinds of work that are outlined in the engagement letters?
And I don't know, and it's not restrained to how many hours they might serve. I mean, Mr. Spees and Ms. Mackey are constrained by rules of professional conduct through the North Carolina State Bar. They can't do extraneous hours. They have to do stuff purposefully for the matter of the scope of engagement. But as the chair mentioned, the way I would understand it for both the amicus brief portion and the, and any resolution for the optional structures of board as authorized by statute, those are each discreet and distinct functions. And I would agree with the chair that within a few months, their work should be done. And if they suggest that they need to do extra work, it's up for this board to say yes or no. It's not an open-ended engagement, but I don't have an estimate.
Sure. So I guess I would just suggest, you know, if we enter into this, that we would ask Mr. Free to keep the commission advised on the number of hours that are being spent on it so that we can be routinely updated on this over the next few weeks. The expectation, again, is that this is not a long-term kind of a scope of work. It's pretty discreet and short-term, but to keep us apprised about it so we can be aware of it and make sure it remains like in the relatively low amount that I think we anticipate it will be. Any other questions right now? All right. There's a motion. And who seconded the motion? Okay, thank you. So we'll do a roll call. I'll start over on Commissioner Edwards' side again. We'll just go down the dais, and then we'll make sure Jasmine is called onto.
Aye.
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 Aye. And Jasmine?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Free, thanks for your thoughts on that as well. All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of hiring Dan Keister, or is it, how do you pronounce his last name? Keister? Okay. As internal audit director. And Kendra Ferguson, the chair of the internal audit committee, will help us with this item. Thanks for being here this evening.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I'll go over a brief summary. I'm pleased to present some potentially good news to you all this time compared to the last time when I was here. So as you all know, the position of internal audit director was vacated on June 30th of this year. We have advertised that position for a total of four months locally and nationally. We had 13 individuals who applied for the position, and six underwent a screening interview with myself, Commissioners Whitesides, Commissioner Presley, as well as Avril. And the top five scoring candidates from those were given the option to do in-person interviews. Of that, we had a couple of in-person interviews, and one finalist kind of rose to the very tip-top, and that was Dan Keister. So he actually came in person to meet with the entire audit committee on December 7th, where he scored extremely high on his presentation, his interviews, as well as all-around feedback that he had with everyone he met with. He actually met with the audit committee that day, as well as the members of the MAG team and Avril as well. Let's see. So the entire audit committee, by majority vote on December 7th, nominated Dan Keister to the Board of Commissioners to fill the office of internal audit director with a tentative start date of January 10th, next Monday, at an annual salary of $110,770. If you'd like some more information on Dan's background, I'm pleased to provide that. He's actually a certified information systems auditor, which is called a CISA, which we're very excited about because that entails a high level of IT audit experience. He has served as the director of internal audit at two various companies, most recently a public company. And we're very excited with the potential of Dan joining Buncombe County. We are requesting that the board consent to hire Dan Keister as the internal audit director.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Presley or Mr. Whitesides, do you all have anything you'd like to add at this time?
What I'd like to do at this time is make a motion that we hire Dan as internal audit.
I'll second it. I mean, through the interviews we got, he rode highly above any of the others. I'm very excited that hopefully we can put this aside the rest of the day.
One additional thing I do want to add really quickly. One of the things that really stood out to me with Dan is his ability to communicate to different groups of people. So as I mentioned before, he presented to the audit committee with a very specific kind of technical presentation that day. And then he also met with members of the management advisory group who aren't experts in internal audit. And he's great at communicating concepts, internal audit concepts, to different groups of people, which is, to me, a really key trait for the position.
And what impressed me about him is that, at this point in time, he is by far the best person for us, because when you look and see now, the only employee left in internal audit is now taking another job with the county, where she will help even more in the risk job. But he will be a good one to, let's face it, he's going to reshape the whole internal audit department, and it will be for the better. So with his experience and all, we applaud.
And Dan does have experience building internal audit teams and kind of building up an organization, which is exactly what we're looking for.
All right. Well, thank you to all of you for helping bring forward such a great candidate. We have a motion and second. I'll start over on Commissioner Presley's side this time. Aye.
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 Jasmine?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with Dan, and he's got such a great reputation. I can't wait for us all to have a chance to meet him as well. So, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a budget amendment for Register of Deeds Excise Stamp Tax. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a budget amendment for register of deeds excise stamp tax.
Good evening. I'm John Hudson with the Budget Department. We have a register of deeds excise stamp tax amendment. This tax is collected by the register of deeds during transactions, of which 49% of that revenue is then remitted back to the state of North Carolina. We budgeted about, we budgeted $6 million in revenue for this particular revenue stream, which means that $2.94 million needed to be paid back to the state. However, we have received over $4 million of this revenue through November, and our projection is that we will receive between $8 and $9 million for the year, which means that we will have to pay the state of North Carolina 49%. So this amendment is to increase that revenue budget by $2.5 million to $8.5 million. We will increase our expenditure budget by $1.225 million. That's the 49% to remit to the state of North Carolina. And we will lower our appropriated fund balance by $1.275 million. So no new county dollars are required in this transaction. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Commissioner Presley?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Beachfarrar? Great, thank you. All right, thank you. The next item is a budget amendment for low-income household water assistance program.
So the low-income household water assistance program is one-time stimulus funding from federal funding passed through to the state to Buncombe County for federally funded temporary relief program that provides emergency assistance to low-income households to prevent disconnection or provide assistance with reconnection of drinking and wastewater services. So we will receive $452,172, of which $69,991 can be used for administration. Eblin Charities will administer this program and provide payments directly to the water and wastewater providers. This funding period begins this month, January, until whichever time the, all of the funds are expended.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. I just have a quick question about implementation of this. If just for the purposes of educating the community, we could take a moment to just describe how people could participate in the program?
Certainly. This will be administered through Health and Human Services. So folks can contact Health and Human Services for information about how to access the services. Eblin also already does our low-income heating assistance programs. So they have worked with many of the same folks who might be impacted by this particular program. But contacting Health and Human Services would be the best way to figure out how to access these services or these dollars.
Thank you. And my understanding is that this would be for county residents? Is it for any county resident or just county residents in unincorporated areas? And then residents in municipalities would participate in the program through them?
It's for any county resident who has, who needs, who has water and wastewater services provided by some entity that has, for preventive disconnection or payment or reconnection or payment of bills. So this would be specific to folks served by entities that provide water and wastewater services and would not extend to people who have their own water supplies.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Beachfarrar, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amanda?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
All right. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the Buncombe County indoor face covering requirement. So obviously, as we're all aware, we've been discussing this on sort of a monthly basis. For the last several months, there have been reasons that the commission has decided to continue the indoor mask policy. So the question before the board this evening is whether to again continue it or it would expire tomorrow.
So Commissioners, during the briefing, probably Health Director Stacy Saunders mentioned two dates. We could go to the first meeting in February. But we really, as a staff, would recommend that we go to the end of February. Because as you heard from Dr. Hathaway and from Stacy both, we're now, we're not even seeing a peak yet of Omicron. So we would like to go a little bit longer and give us some time to work through that.
So what is the, what are the two specific dates that were mentioned?
So it'd be the Wednesday, just like this one now, the day after the board meeting, and it would be February 3rd?
So the first meeting is on the first, so the day after would be the second. And then the third meeting is on the 15th?
So that will be the day after that?
The day after that would be the 16th?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we extend the policy through February 16th.
Second.
Further discussion? You know, I'll just say, you know, I'm eager for this to be done as anybody. I, you know, find that it all really, it's like, it's not enjoyable. Like, it's not pleasant. Nobody enjoys doing this, right? So, but, and I've, you know, since we reestablished the policy, I've been hoping that the numbers would get to a place where we could comfortably feel responsible in letting it go. And, but I don't think that we're, we're not in that moment right now. I think, as was outlined earlier today, like, this is the highest level of COVID transmission by far we've ever seen. I think we're all heartened that there's, you know, all this evidence that this may not make people in general as sick as the previous variants. And that's something to be grateful for. And the other thing is that, you know, from some of the places that this variant has arrived sooner than here, they've seen this explosion of cases, and then it's declined really rapidly. And I hope that that is what we see here too. So my hope is that while the next several weeks are likely, as Stacy Saunders said earlier, to be really, really rough, maybe one of the roughest periods of the pandemic, that we see this peak happen soon and then to quickly decline. So I'm as eager for us to get beyond this as anybody. And I hope that when we get to mid-February, we are through this Omicron wave and that we might be in a position to really reconsider a different approach after that. But I support it for now. Any other comments?
I just want to say, I'm looking at our metrics for folks who didn't see the briefing today. And I think the 650 cases per 100,000 population was very sobering to see in that red block. And I very much agree. I'm ready for this to be over too. But looking at that number was very staggering and certainly makes an impact in my decision-making this evening.
I have personally known more people in the last two weeks who have contracted COVID than I think I have known over the last year. I mean, it is, it is just very pervasive. It's very contagious. So I just really urge people to please, please be safe over the coming weeks. And hopefully, the worst will be beyond us fairly soon. But it's a risky time. Commissioner Beachfarrar, I'll ask you to vote, to get us started on the voting.
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
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 Brandy, I just want to bring up something that really put me in a bad position of an email or something you had on your Facebook. And I've been telling people, you know, they've asked me about this, when's it going to stop? I said, well, good news is, none of us like it. But we all know. And I said, you know, one thing is Chairman Newman made a comment that no matter what the outcome was, and I know we can't see the future, we've seen a big spike here. And, you know, through what I read that you said, that no matter what, we was probably can, we will not see the mask after February 4th. So now I'm going to go back, tell everybody that's asking about this. You know, I thought that it was made by the commission and the chairman quoted saying that this probably would be over. And I know that we're seeing the largest spike we've ever seen.
Yep. I think, I think what I said was, you know, if the trends continued in the way that were at that point in the past, I wouldn't support, I would not support continuing the mask mandate into February. I think that's, that's the comment that I made. I've tried to, I think I've been fairly consistent on that. But, you know, but unfortunately, they haven't. I mean, I think this is, this is unfortunately, you know, it's a really major reversal of what we had as very good trends, you know, not that long ago. So I anyway, maybe, maybe I should not have painted that potentially optimistic scenario. But I think I have been clear about the reasons I would support continuing it or not continuing it. So how do you vote on it? Okay, all right. All right, Commissioners, thank you. That's all the items under new business. We do have a couple of board appointments. The first is under the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And we've got three appointments to make. I'll make a motion that we appoint Gianna Restivo, Terry Raffensky, and Barbara Butcher.
Second.
Commissioner Edwards, will you get us started?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
On the Agricultural Advisory Board for Farmland Preservation, we have one appointment.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Charles Hubbard to the Agriculture Advisory Board.
Second.
Aye.
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 And under Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we've got two appointments.
I move we appoint Molly Rose and C.C. Weston.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you. We do have a need for a closed
Chairman Newman?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Joyner?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just would like to give the board an update. Before the holidays, the board asked for the clerks to re-advertise for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We had one resignation on that position. We have continued to advertise and the advertisement is ongoing. We didn't end that advertisement. But just want to let you know that we've only had one applicant to come in, application to come in during that time period. So right now, we're just looking at one application for that resonated position.
And I'm sorry, on this, on which board?
That was the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, previously occupied by Rob Thomas, that position.
Okay. Do we want to take some additional time or what's the feelings of the board on this?
Just one. I don't know if the
Who is the person who applied?
I don't have her name right now. But I can get that information to the board and the application if you would like to see the application prior to.
I think that's a good suggestion. So we'll, let's keep it open between now and our next meeting. And then anybody who applies between now and the next meeting, we could interview the person who applied and anybody else who applies, assuming we don't get 50 applications in the next two weeks, which sounds unlikely.
So you would like to hold off and schedule the interviews or potentially schedule the interviews at our next meeting?
Do we want to schedule interviews? Or do we want to just see what happens in the next two weeks and then make a decision about interviews? I think that's a good idea. So if anybody knows, anybody who might be interested in serving on this, we really encourage them to reach out and have them apply, submit an application so that we can go ahead and schedule interviews and make a decision on filling that seat. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Mr. Frew, there's a need for a closed session?
Change of plans. I'm going to take a new route on that and talk to a couple of people and I hope not to bring it back in two weeks, but I probably will.
Okay, so no need for a closed session this evening? All right, brilliant. Is there, we are, we've got a couple of announcements. On January 18th at 3:00 PM, the County Commissioners Briefing Meeting will be held at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. January 18th at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners Regular Meeting will be held at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Amanda, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right. This meeting's adjourned.